I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Kylie, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, back to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, just a couple of quick points before we step into the agenda. One, it is Restaurant Week. So we have 38 restaurants participating. They're actually having some fabulous deals out there. So I would encourage everybody to take a lunch and a dinner and get out and support our local restaurants. It's one of the real treasures of our town. Second item, we're also currently conducting our tax revaluation. Want to mention that the appraisers are getting out to each house so we can do what's called a full data collection. We want to collect as much information as possible in order to make our revale process as accurate as we can. However, as much as they're coming to each house in order to have an opportunity to review the interior of the home, it is not a requirement that the homeowner allow them into the house. That is up to the homeowner. We are asking you to do that because we want the revale to be as accurate as possible, but it is not an obligation or requirement. Each appraiser has an identification and a letter from the town. So that if you have any questions, you can ask them to see that. If you have any questions beyond that, you're welcome to call Town Hall and we will get you some additional information. But we would ask for your cooperation in doing that. So again, this is in everybody's best interest to make, on one hand, to make sure everybody pays their fair share of taxes, but nobody pays a single penny more than they should. So we thank you for your cooperation there. And moving on, we also are in the midst of our Fairfield of the Year and Town Employee of the Year contest. We have extended the nominating date. So it's now November 21st. So we are accepting nominations for both Fairfield of the Year and Town Employee of the Year through November 21st. Those go to a nominating committee for evaluation and recommendation, and the top candidates are recommended to the Board of Selectmen, which then votes on the recommendations in each category. All right, with that, moving on to item three on the agenda, to consider an act upon the minutes of special meeting of September 23rd, 2014. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or adjustments to be made to that? You ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, to consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting of October 1st, 2014. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion or amendments? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have an item on the agenda, 375th Anniversary Grand Gala Committee Update. At the last minute, the committee chairs were unable to make it today, so we're going to hold that off to another meeting. Next up--
Go ahead. Just on that one item, do you have an update on ticket sales?
Yes, we have about, there are about 400 tickets that we have available for that evening. There are about 50 left. That's 5-0 left. They've been going, this ticket sale's been going very well. We've had tremendous sponsor support. We've had tremendous advertisement support, and the tickets have done exceedingly well. It's going to be a night to remember.
Thank you.
And if anybody's interested in ticket sales, I would encourage you to go to www.fairfield375.org. Well, not slash, but go there and we will, in fact, you can order your tickets online from that point. Or if you don't want to do that, you can come down to the Old Town Hall and in the Economic Development Office. Nancy is there to take your money and you can make your reservations there. Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
You're welcome.
Next up, the item five, Friends, the Fairfield Public Library, to hear a report from the Friends of the Fairfield Public Library. This is, again, a series of the, next in the series of ongoing number of reports we've asked for different not-for-profit groups around town to come and update us on what they're doing. So as the Board of Selectmen, we see these groups come before us a lot. We see personally the impact they have on our town and making our community special. Not everybody does, so we've invited them to give a report to the Board of Selectmen so we can see what's going on. Mr. Koff, are you here? There we are. There you are, front row and center. Please just come up to the podium, introduce yourself to the folks at home, and if you'll give us a brief update on the Friends.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My name is Bill Hopf. I'm president of the Friends of the Fairfield Public Library. And I'm here partly to tell everybody that we're having a membership drive next week, starting on the 19th through the 25th. And we'll be in the two public libraries at a table and looking to sign up folks to be members of the Friends of the Public Library. At this point, I'd just like to talk about who the Friends are so people have an understanding of what it is that we do. We are private citizens who have a passion for anything that's library-related pretty much, for the programs, the people who run it and staff it, such that we volunteer our time to do three things primarily. First is, we like to celebrate what goes on at the library so that people are aware of what takes place. It used to be, one of the things I used to like to say about the library was, it's not your mother's library anymore. Then I realized if I said that to an eight-year-old, that it might cause some confusion. So I stopped saying that. But I do recall when, in my generation, when you went to the library, it was Dewey Decimal card racks in a musty industrial strength building that was presided over by Ms. Gooch of Wizard of Oz fame. And it's, and now the, today's library is not like that anymore. Modern libraries have a lot more going on, and we are fortunate to have two people, Karen Ronald and Nancy Cordy, who are excellent administrators and very, they are, I would say, our libraries are shining examples of what a library can offer and become now in today's modern age. They have been, they are visionary, they're progressive, they're hardworking. They have a terrific staff, and they offer many opportunities for the citizens of Fairfield to broaden their horizons and deepen their knowledge through the programs and the materials that they provide. We also advocate for the library, and to that end, you know, after the experience of the last budget go-round where the materials budget was cut by $75,000, we decided in July that we were going to have a, what we call a slow drip campaign, where we were going to push forward the library to keep it sort of in the public eye as best we could. To that end, we've developed a sticker, which we now have as of today. And if you see these on the back of somebody's car, it'll be an indication that the person is a supporter of the library. We're hoping that we'll, you'll see a lot of these around town to help push forward the fact that the library is loved by many. And the last thing that we do is we, and not least, is we fundraise. So we raise money for special projects and special needs. We paid to replace the curbside book depository box at the main branch. We pay for the museum passes, which all told, last year, the Fairfield citizens saved about $120,000 in museum fees by taking advantage of the passes that we provided. We bought sewing machines and furniture for the branch. We sponsor the Soundways Concert Series, One Book, One Town. And we're raising funds right now to renovate the memorial room as part of the 375th birthday celebration that coincides with that. So the ways that we raise money are, we have two fundraising events. One is the mini golf that takes place in March at the branch. The other is a ladies' literary luncheon, which this year Marlo Thomas came and talked about her book. That was held at the Patterson Club. And then lastly, the other way is, we have membership, that people, by joining our group and hopefully volunteering their time, but then also by paying membership fee, it puts money in our coffers to pass along to the library for certain things that the library needs. So that's our group, and hope to see everybody or some of you at the branch and the main library next week.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Thank you so much for being here. And as we were discussing earlier, I am a longtime fan of the Friends and of the library, so I'm grateful that you're here to share a little bit about what you're doing. One of the questions I have for you is, how do you make a decision as to what you will fund for the library? I'm thinking of some of our other budgetary conversations in other areas where we talk about supplementing as opposed to supplanting, and how do you decide where those funds will be used?
It starts with a wish list from Karen and Nancy. They will come to us with, this past time around, they had seven items, and that's when we decided we would pay for the sewing machines and new furniture at the branch, which was pretty sorry in shape. And what else? A number of other things. We passed on, one thing at the time, which was to replace the sign. That was just as a group, we've, it was earlier in the budget season for us, so we thought we'd hold on that until the, at least from my perspective, till the end of the fiscal year to see if there was funds left for that, in case there was something else that was seemingly to us more important that might come along. But it really starts with ideas that come from Nancy and Karen.
So then, as a follow-up to that, are there guiding criteria within that, or is it simply a conversation of the members of--
In a general sense, we're not looking to make up for budget shortfalls, so we wouldn't be wanting to feel that we were raising money to replace materials, the materials budget because it was cut. We're really looking to do things that make the library extraordinary, like having sewing machines. And they have a lot of crafts things going on at the branch, and I think that's important.
And one other question, in terms of the bulk of funds, I know that you're big supporters of the One Book, One Town. Is that, would you say that primarily that most funds are going there, or is it really spread out among the areas?
I think the single most important thing, the most expensive thing that we spend money on is the museum passes. That's a $10,000 investment on our part, which blossoms into more because the way, because the museum's cut or break as well.
Can you just explain what museum passes mean? What's that program? How does it work?
You come to the, one of the libraries and they'll give you a pass to museums in the local area, but also there are some in New York City as well where you can get in at a discount or at no charge. And that's basically what it is.
Great benefit that I'm not sure everybody realizes. Mr. Kylie, did you have any thoughts?
A quick couple, yes. Bill, thank you for being here, and thank you for advocating for our library, you and your friends. Much appreciated. And you touched on the programs, and the programs at the library are absolutely, they are wonderful. My family gets to take advantage of them, and as a matter of fact, my son was at the library this afternoon after school at Fairfield Woods, and they make great use of that resource on both sides of town, so very, very true. Question for you, how does, if you'd like to take a second to tell everyone, how does a person join your organization or acquire one of the bumper stickers?
Well, for sure, if you've joined the organization, you'll get one of these.
Right.
We have online, you can join the organization by filling a form out online, which is, we have a page in the library's website, and on that page you fill out the information, and through PayPal you can pay for the membership. It's $20 for a senior, $35 for an individual, $50 for a family.
Okay.
If you want to be a sponsor of something, which is, for instance, you can be a sponsor of One Book, One Town, which is, that program is, the committee selects a book that everybody's going to read, and then the author will come and talk about it, and that's what that's about.
All right.
And there are people who will sponsor that because it does cost something. And so you can say, gee, I want to donate money for that because I have a passion for that. One of the other things we do is, we work with the Kirchner Art Gallery. We have a member on our board who is, works with them to curate the works that come in. So we're involved in that as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, okay. Chris?
Am I, am I correct in my understanding that there's a National Friends of Public Libraries Week coming up?
Yes. Our week coincides with the National Friends of Libraries Week.
How lucky that that is.
It's just a coincidence, nothing more.
Go ahead.
I do have one more thing.
Yeah.
The library's not just a resource for our town, but it's a wonderful partner with our town. And a great example of that is the Woods branch has one of the electric car charging stations in their parking lot, and everyone who's using that is very grateful for that and thank you for participating in that. And I believe the ribbon-cutting ceremony for that is this Saturday at 11:00 a.m.? Is that correct, Jen?
Yes.
So, you know, thank you to the library for participating in that very important project.
I'll pass it along. Setting a great example for our entire town, so thank you. Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much, and good luck to the Friends.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
The next up, the Fairfield Ludlow High School, no, the Kiwanis Club of Fairfield, sorry, to hear a report from the Kiwanis Club of Fairfield. Here we go. Thank you very much. Please just introduce yourself. Say my name. Yes. Good evening. My name's Dave McMorris, and I am with the Fairfield Kiwanis Club, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight for the next two hours. I think it's important that we do a really quick history of the Kiwanis Club.
And way back when, Woodrow Wilson was president, there was a war raging in Europe, Alexander Graham Bell reached out to Thomas Watson out in San Francisco, and Babe Ruth actually got his first start on the mound for the Red Sox. That year was 1915, and that's the year Kiwanis International was chartered. Now, we're going to fast-forward to JFK's inauguration. Alan Shepard became the first American in space, and Roger Maris did the impossible. Any ideas on what year we're talking about?
1961.
61, there you go. That's the year the Fairfield Kiwanis Club was chartered. And over the last 53 years, the Kiwanis Club has pursued a mission of building a better community through service for others, and most importantly, improving the lives of the children of the community. And we've done this several ways, through dedicated service and fundraising. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through everything we've done over the last 53 years, but I do want to highlight some of the things that we've done. A lot of you in the room might remember our famous peanut sales at the various parades in town. We've hosted golf tournaments. Our annual poinsettia sale still goes on, citrus sales, motorcycle and car raffles. We've hosted various food tents and various town events, most notably the Memorial Day Parade, Italian and Irish festivals, and finally, our annual craft fair, which is, we're up at 23 years now. It's a two-day event right here on the green, and we always appreciate what the town does for us in their cooperation with that. We have something new this year for the Kiwanis Club, and that is, with the assistance of the town, we'll be sponsoring Safety Street for the enjoyment of the children of Fairfield. So obviously, October 31st, after a two-year absence, with the help of the town, Kiwanis is going to take charge and do a wonderful thing for the kids. Once again, that's what we're all about, it's the kids. And we're going to do it in a very safe environment with the help of the police department. We've gone out and canvassed a lot of the merchants in town to get their feedback. We've enlisted the help of our key club, key clubbers in the local high schools to assist the merchants to make this as enjoyable for the kids and still be enjoyable for the merchants. And the sole purpose of all these fundraising events, obviously, is to raise money to give back to the community. Every year, first, the club is very proud to give out $10,000 in college scholarships to Fairfield High School students. We think that's a wonderful commitment to the kids of our community and for the future. Hopefully, they stay in the Fairfield area, but the future of America. We also help through our fundraising efforts to mentor the key clubs. The key clubs, it's, if you will, the junior Kiwanis. It's the high school kids that are in, really in the junior Kiwanis Club. And it's the oldest and largest service organization for teens, and we teach them different leadership skills. More importantly, we emphasize the importance of service for others. And I could tell you, just back in September, we had the craft fair. Those kids were out there at 7:30 in the morning, helping all our crafters unload their merchandise, set up their tents. They're going to be out there on the Safety Street, and continuously, they're working behind the scenes, doing a lot of things that the community probably doesn't even recognize. But that's some of the things we do. We helped build the Kiwanis baseball field. That's going back before my time. And we've also raised funds and used our manpower to build the jungle gym over at the Ludlow Center, which I understand is no longer there. But we did raise the money, and we did make the efforts to do that. And Bill, you might appreciate this, through some of our fundraising efforts, we established a children's reference center at the library, a place for parents and kids to visit and learn together. We're very proud of that. We also contribute to the Connecticut Pediatric Trauma Organization, and it's good that we're doing all this within Fairfield, but we do other things outside of Fairfield. One of our main focuses of Kiwanis International is the Eliminate Project, and that is raising money to provide inoculations to eliminate maternal and neonatal tetanus in Africa, which we're very fortunate in the United States, but you can imagine what goes on over there. And it's, it's helped decrease the death rate at birth substantially through those efforts. And just last year, with the success of the Little League World Series participants, we helped raise some funds to build a well in the jungle of Uganda, the first drinking well. So not just in Fairfield, but outside, outside the borders, we're helping. We don't just help the kids, we also help the community. And we worked in the past with Americare, dedicating our time to help renovate and update homes. We've worked with the Learn to Read Program. We're collecting thousands and thousands of books for the schools and distributing to people that are less fortunate than ourselves to help eradicate people with learning disabilities or just literacy. We do Santa's visits. We do, we published Senior Citizens Guide. We've installed telephone systems in the senior housing complex. We donate countless hours to the local food banks and the food drives throughout Fairfield and Bridgeport. What I'd like to leave you with today is, the Kiwanis Club of Fairfield, through its service, I emphasize service in fundraising efforts, has built a better community in Fairfield, and we've improved the lives of the children of the community. And our mission really is to change the world, one child at a time and one community at a time. And I want to thank you for allowing me to pontificate. And if you have any questions, I'd welcome them.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
I will comment. I was--
Oh, and we have great speakers that come to our weekly meetings.
I was privileged to join the Kiwanis Club today at lunchtime and said that it's just great to hear about the work you're doing for young people, having been with some other folks here at a meeting earlier today, talking about that as well, so in a different way. But I really appreciate all that you're doing, and it was wonderful to hear of the variety and breadth of different offerings that you have given to this community. It's truly amazing. So thank you very much for being here.
My pleasure. Mr. Kylie?
Yeah, Dave, thank you for being here, and thank you for listing all those very valuable services that you do provide for our children and our town. I mean, it's wonderful, and we benefit greatly from it, and, you know, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And again, to add my comments, under full disclosure, I do have to mention, back in the late 90s, I was a member of the Kiwanis Club. It was a great group of people that really come together with one purpose, which is to help the community and contribute to our community. And I've got a number of great stories, but one of my favorite is, one of the Americare's project, remember, we're in the kitchen painting the trim at the bottom of the floor, and I come around the corner, and I'm face-to-face with Jaclyn Durrell, who's covered with white paint on her face and on her nose. I don't think I contributed to, but it was part of the fun project we had. So a lot of good memories and a lot of good people doing that. If somebody's interested in becoming a member, how would they go about that?
Glad you brought that up. One, we meet every Wednesday at 12:15 at the Gaelic American Club, and we'd love for anybody to stop by. We generally have a guest speaker. That's one way, or you go right onto the Internet and Fairfield Kiwanis Club, and there's an application there, you can fill it out, and then we'll get back to you on that. But really, we'd love for you to come down, 12:15 every Wednesday at the Gaelic American Club.
All right. Well, thank you again.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
And now, we're up to item seven on the agenda, to hear an update from the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee. Thank you for joining us today.
My pleasure. Good evening. My name is Mark Donald. I'm the chairman of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee. I had asked the, our program managers, Mark, Edes, to join us, but apparently, Mr. Dwyer was a little more accomplished in setting up the mutiny for my team than he was for yours. And actually, oh, actually, I just noticed online that there is an accident right here at exit 22, so I apologize for not having the handouts that they were supposed to bring. The good news is, there are no injuries reported. And the even better news is NBC Connecticut said the lanes will be reopened monetarily. So I'm hoping that will flow right into what I have to present right now.
Must be the New Jersey approach.
Either way, it works for this committee chair. So essentially, as we find out more information and get our plans a little closer to specs, along with all the necessary governmental approvals, the budget started at 11.63 million, which is what was approved based on the Silver Prentice Alec Board January in 2013. Currently, as we find out more information, the budget is right around 14.2 million dollars. The major reason for the budget escalation would be an increase in soft costs, and also as we refine the different aspects of the building, the additions as well as the PCB abatement, the soft costs have increased from the original report of about a million dollars. Additionally, one of the reasons for the escalation is the original budget, the 11.63 percent, was based-- was based on an actual 2013 number with the addition of 5% per year that was not included in the original budget. So 5% over the course of the time would increase around 1.5 to 2 million dollars from the original 11.63 number.
Okay, just anymore, there were three phases of the project, the roof, the cafeteria and classroom expansion, and the PCB and windows. Can you highlight what's transpired in each of those phases?
Sure. So we bid out originally the roof in, I believe, June of this year, either May or June of this year. The original bids came in extremely high based on the original numbers. As a committee, we decided to hold off based on the advice of the team because of the summer month, the bidding schedule, et cetera. So currently, those numbers have been refined, they're out to bid. We expect that to conclude within the next three weeks, and the numbers, based on consultations from some of the roofing companies that we've talked to, are expected to come down significantly. Phase two would be the additions, that is going out to bid shortly as well, and we're hoping to break ground in December. And then Phase three is dependent on EPA approval, Phase three is the windows, based on the EPA approval of the abatement plan.
And can you give us the timing on that, like what, is there a current, on the expansion? Is there a, you said you're talking about going out to bid and breaking ground in December. What are the steps in there, and when will you know, when do the bids come back?
The bids come back in the beginning of November. If I recall correctly, to get the program to break ground in December, we've been in discussions with Mr. Hatzus about potentially getting in a little bit earlier so that the entire cafeteria and classroom additions would be ready for September of 2015. The windows, because of the abatement issues, as well as construction costs, potentially could be the end of summer 2016.
And then, with the PCBs, where does that stand in terms of window piece? What's the, what plan has been developed? When will we hear back on that in terms of specifically what's taking place?
So what is the date on the...
Sal, if you would just introduce yourself and...
Hi, Sal Morvino, manager of construction for the Board of Education. There are actually two PCB abatement plans filed with the U.S. EPA. The first one is for, what you're seeing on your sheet there is Phase two, which is the additions. It's a smaller scope abatement because it's just at the junctions of the additions. EPA is close to issuing their approval on that, and we've had several conversations with them in the past week. We are on the cusp of getting that piece of paper, and we can go to bid. That's the last piece of paper we need for the state's OSF to get approval to bid. The other plan was issued, was submitted to EPA, which is for the windows, the rest of the project, in August or near the end of August. That is still up in Boston for review. Frankly, she's, the reviewer, Tim Katisa from EPA, hasn't made a lot of progress on that one. So we're trying to get her to speed up the review so that the windows can be, that's also the last item we need for OSF approval for the window bid. So the game plan is to try to bid the windows before Christmas. So typically, the timeframe for EPA approval is longer than that. So we're hopeful that we can get the EPA to work with us and get through the review and approval process as quickly as possible so we can bid and get the best numbers possible.
Within what's defined as a cleanup process, as you noted, is that within the range of what the initial estimates were? Do you expect this to come in, this phase to come in on budget at this point?
When you're saying this phase, the phase that's presently out to bid is the roof.
PCBs and the windows.
PCB and the windows are...
You've defined a cleanup plan in more detail, if I understood you correctly.
Right.
My question is, is that within the range of what the estimated cleanup plan was?
Yes.
Or is that higher at this point, and we expect this to come in higher at this point because of that?
There was nothing extensively different, and the numbers are supposed to be appropriately the same. There are many of the questions that were at the beginning of design have been answered, and the budget's reflecting that. The final update on the budget will happen when the drawings are complete in the next couple of weeks, the actual construction drawings, but there's no expectation of a big deviation on that.
All right. So in another three or four weeks, you'll have an update on the budget for what I'm going to call Phase three for the windows. Is that a fair way to say that? And then, on the cafeteria expansion and the classroom piece, that I think historically has been called Phase two?
Correct.
Okay. What was the original budget for that, and where does that stand at the moment?
And part of the confusion is that the phases are renumbered on this estimate sheet, so bear with me. The estimate for the plan that was developed now, the scheme that was chosen, started off at 3.665.
That was in the original budget that added up to 11.6, that was the number that was...
The original number was 3.8.
Okay. So it went from 3.8 to 3.65?
To 3.65, and that was back in March when the conceptual plan was developed and accepted.
And what's our best available estimate for what that phase should cost?
Right now, the estimate for that phase is 5.439.
And can somebody give us some background as to what drove the cost from 3.8 to 5.4, which is about 1.6 million, or almost a 50% increase?
That would be Mr. Delaccio that's stuck in traffic. Traffic is supposed to be giving that detail.
All right. And then, on the roof piece, the estimates came in higher, but we're looking to rebid that. Did we make any changes there in anticipation of those?
What the team did, the architect and construction manager met with the bidders, there's Mike, so Mike can take over the part about the additions. They met with the bidders and said, what was a problem here? Were there any unusual details, something that we can change, methods or what have you? That was, it was quite extensive, the debrief that they had with those vendors that initially bid, and that was worked into, reworked into the new plans that are out to bid now. So they're taking the best advice from the people that seen the original plan, asked what the problems were, and some of the problems were that there was only one mechanical bidder available to all the roofer, roof bidders, so the construction manager's looking for more participation and competition on that avenue.
Is there any of that delta, any increase from the roof component or roof phase of this that was included in the overall increase of the project, or we're saying, because we don't have the bids back, we've made some changes, we don't have the bids back yet, we're not sure what that will be?
Correct. And Mike can explain the change in the budget from the 2.2 to the 2.7 on the roof.
Okay. You said 2.2, 2.7, can you give me those numbers again?
What this estimate's reading was, the initial roof estimate was, if you go all the way back to the Silver Petroselli number, it was 2.6 million dollars. March, the team's estimate on the conceptual plan that was issued or accepted for this project was 2.2 million, under the column of March 26th. You move over to the left, to the column of March, October 8th, the number is just about 2.8 million.
Okay. And then that's...
Sal, you're referring to this sheet?
Referring to that sheet, yes. And Mike hopefully has cleaner ones.
Hey, Sal, thanks for being here. A question. I thought that I heard a couple different times, once at the capital planning workshop meeting from Dr. Title, and once from you just now, that the problem with the window bids were that they went out in the summer.
The roof.
The roof, I'm sorry, the roof. And they came, and they came back higher because it seemed to be a busy time of year, roofers were busy, prices were spiked. Is that, did I get that?
That's part of it.
That's part of it, okay. Which makes sense. I would venture a guess that, you know, bids would be higher for that type of work in the middle of summer when guys are busier, but I'm not following that on this document. That's what's puzzling me, because if the original SPA was the 2.64, and then the subsequent estimates in March and July were roughly 2.2, that's about, that's the timeframe that I thought that the bids were first out there when they came back higher because it was that time of year? Is that, am I following this correctly? Because now they're higher than that, so it's kind of the inverse of what I was expecting.
The, Mike can explain the development of the numbers.
Okay.
The Silver Petroselli's numbers that were used for funding had a couple of different conceptual designs. That was the basis for those numbers.
Okay.
Those were evaluated, along with many other schematic conceptual plans for, to accomplish what the ed spec requested. When you're looking at the second column from the right, that is the plan that the team finally landed on.
March 26th.
March 26th.
Got it.
So we're really talking from that number.
Okay.
For changes in the, quote-unquote, the budget for the project.
Right. Well, I'm less concerned about that decrease from the SPA to the March estimate, and I'm just not clear, maybe you can help me understand.
Yeah. Turn that over to Mike.
If the rationale that I thought I heard was at all correct, that that was a busy time of year, and the roof bids came in higher because of that or as a function of that, then why would it be higher in October?
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, well, first, I just want to apologize for being late. Sorry about that. My name is Mike Delaccio, I'm with Arcadis, the owner's representative on this project. Well, what we're looking at here is on March, in March 26th, the 2.2 million was a conceptual estimate. We did not have the plans, and we were basically using a square footage number to get, to come to that number. As we went on, we developed the plans over the spring, and we had a number, we had the plans, we went to OFS and PCT in June and July, and we developed the plans, and we came up with a number of 2.7, which is what we're using right now on the 10-8 column. We went out, we went out to bid in July, I believe, and that's when we got the high numbers for the roof. So we didn't, in March, we did not have the bid numbers. We got them in July, and they were higher than what we expected, and that's due to several factors, like Sal was saying.
All right. So I think we're saying the same thing now. I just was expecting that knowledge to be reflected in the July column, and I'm not seeing it till the October column.
Well, I think we went to bid right after that.
Okay.
So these three columns, they were all presented after the meeting. That day, that was a 7, that's 2. We had a building committee meeting, and this number was represented there. So that's why I didn't want to kind of change anything.
So just to tie that one piece down, is it safe to say that you have enough knowledge based on the recent summertime bids or thereafter to have comfort with the roof number being roughly 2.8 million dollars?
I hope so. I mean, this is, this is an estimate that Gilbane did, and it's an estimate, we don't know exactly where the bids will be, but, you know, we, the low bid this past summer was 3.2 million, so we're hoping for a good amount less.
Also, the low bid in July was 400K higher than this 2.8. You're hoping the bids to come in in November, December?
Yeah, we reflected some changes in the plans, and due to that, and also due to the time we're sending, putting this out to bid, we're hoping for lower numbers.
Yeah, that goes back to Mr. Tetra's question. He was asking just as you were walking in, can you just walk us through, I think that's what you were asking, what those modifications to the roof plan were that helped you drive the cost down?
Sure. Well, we added some more alternates into the roof to get a better knowledge of what the bidders, what the best option for us would be.
And just to explain that for anybody who's familiar, when you say you add alternates in, you're really taking requirements out.
Correct.
And reclassifying them as something that, if funds are available, will do this. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So you're not adding in so much as taking out requirements for the job.
Yeah. But the main thing and the big part was, that drove the number up, was the HVAC and mechanical equipment. A lot of the roofers did not, they don't normally do that, and so since it's all one package, they have to hire the HVAC subcontractor themselves. So this time around, we're going to put it out on this, put it out, get more knowledge of HVAC bidders in order to get better prices. They also made some changes. There was a certain amount of requirement that they need to move equipment, it was 18 inches, they lowered that to six inches, so they'll allow, there's more, there's more room for the roofers to make adjustments in this bid, in this time around, so.
Just on that, staying on that topic, I read a memo, I think it was last week, and there was some commentary in there about changing in the water drains or the way the water was being drained. Can you help me understand that? And does it cause any danger to the project, and what does it mean?
Well, we had to add drains due to code, and those can't be changed. We still have to put those drains in because of code reasons, so I don't, those were not changed.
So there weren't any changes to water drains?
I think I can clarify.
Okay, thank you.
The newer code requires that you have what's called secondary drains, in case the primary drain fails, there's a secondary method for water to get off of the roof so it doesn't overpond and cause structural failure. The method that they're accomplishing the secondary drain has changed in some locations to an easier method. So that's a number that we're hoping to drive down. Some of the other things, as Mike was saying, there was changes to the mechanical detailing. There were certain specifications, as Mike was alluding to, certain distances when equipment had to be moved. That's been loosened up to allow the roofer to come up with the means and method to accomplish the actual work that we need, which is the roof, and not dictate to them that you've got to spend a lot of money to physically move a piece of equipment when, in the mind of the roofer, they have the ability to accomplish a roof detail without doing that physical piece of labor. It's given the roofer a little bit more flexibility in being able to meet the plans and specifications that we want, and that unties their hands. The other thing that they found was, there was only one mechanical contractor that was providing numbers as a subcontractor to the roofers that were bidding. All three roofers, roofing companies that bid, were using the same mechanical contractor. So you're relying on one person's number, you're kind of at their mercy, so it was not a reasonable number in analysis, at least from the CM's point of view. So the CM is, you know, chasing around to make sure that there's mechanical subcontractors that are willing to work with the roofing contractors on this project, so that there's more competition and better numbers available.
Okay. So net-net, when we're done here, the roof, it was, the original estimate was 2.64, now it's roughly 2.8, it's $160,000 off. What is your comfort level that we're going to be able to come in at that number when the bids are in and when the work gets specced out?
I mean, I am comfortable that we will come in around this number that Gilbane proposed, 2.8.
Given some of the other variances in this project from March until now, I mean, it's a reasonable question to ask. We just don't want to be sitting here finding out that the roof is now 3.4, and we have another $600,000 variance to the plan. So you guys, as consultants, are comfortable that that 2.8... So you guys as consultants are comfortable that that 2.8 is a, is a pretty solid number on the roof component itself?
Yep. Yeah, I'm comfortable with the changes the architect made in the roof and the time we're bidding and the amount of bidders we're going to get, we will have, will be closer to this number.
Thanks. Kristen, we've kind of monopolized the question.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I got stuck on the roof, sorry.
That's okay. Good discussion, good discussion. Any, any place else? Because I was going to go to the cafeteria expansion next, if that was okay?
Yeah.
Kind of similar questions on the cafeteria expansion. This has gone from 3.8 to 3.6 to 5.4. That seems to be a big chunk of the increase. Can you kind of help us understand what's going on there?
Yeah, well, this, the first estimate we did on 326, again, it was conceptual. We didn't have, we didn't have any plans. We had a sketch. We're going off square footage numbers. We did, we did a lot of value engineering, changing the size of the building, moving things around to try to get it within the budget because we already kind of, we already had to lower it to begin with. And in order to fit the amount of kids in that cafeteria that we would like, we got it to the right size. But going from the conceptual estimate to the DD estimate, the design development estimate, where we actually had plans and looked at them, there was a lot more that went into the cafeteria than was originally thought. The HVAC equipment, again, was a, it was a big issue. It was about a million dollars. And we did not, we did not have for that much in our conceptual estimate.
What did you have in your conceptual estimate?
We had about $250,000.
Okay, so that's like a four-time increase in that one component.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Can you help us understand kind of what the change in assumptions or design was? What, what grew that number?
Well, there, there was no design, our first number, we were just using a square footage estimate. A lot of the HVAC, the ductwork has to be replaced in the cafeteria and that, that raised the number a lot.
Okay, by 300%?
Yeah, I mean, we, the conceptual number, you, you don't, we didn't, we don't know what, what was going to be involved in the makeup of the cafeteria at that point. It's just purely a square footage number.
Okay, yeah, I just would have thought the, of all the things that can go wrong or be off, HVAC, because somewhere you have a compressor and someplace else you have ductwork, that those would have been two of the more easier to estimate variables. So I just realized there's a lot of things that can go wrong in construction. So in other areas, totally by the fact that, that we could be off that much, but it was that much on just the HVAC here.
Yeah.
So that's, of the 1.6, that's about 800,000 of it. Where's the other 800,000?
Well, this, this number, the, the 3.6 going to the, the five, roughly 5 million, that's the cafeteria and the classroom additions.
Okay.
So that's all the new construction and renovation.
All right, so.
And we, again, we did not have plans. We were going off a conceptual estimate, going off to a, looking at plans, and, and the number was raised. The number was actually a lot higher than this. We did a lot of value engineering to get us down to this number.
Yeah, when we talked in July, this number was much, and you and I didn't talk, but we had a chance to talk with the building committee a bit, and this number was much higher at that point.
Yes.
Can you tell us some of the things you've changed to get it down to this number?
Well, the big one was we changed the size of the cafeteria. I mean, we, we took out many smaller items that we didn't think we needed. I don't have the value engineering list. I mean, I could pull it in front, I could pull it out here. It's, it's a, it's pretty extensive. So before we did any value engineering, we were at 6.1 million and we brought it down to five. Classroom, classroom expansion, we saved. Well, just, I'll start from the top. We deleted some of the stair finishes, 36,000. Some of the specialties in the, in the science rooms. We changed the science room. I don't know if we, we didn't, we reduced the amount of sinks we needed. I mean, there's, there's numerous items we did. This, this value engineering went for about a month. I mean, I can show you this, or do you want me to go through this whole list?
Well, let me, let me characterize it in terms of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Which is it's lots of littles that went into that as opposed to any one or two big things.
Yes, it's a lot of.
Whereas on the other side, there's a million dollar, you know, $800,000 increase because of HVAC. On the balance, that was lots of littles in terms of going through line by line to see what economies can be made.
Yeah, I mean, we, we went, we went back and forth for about a month.
Part of what I was trying to get to is to see if there's any functionality that was changed when we went through that.
No, we had the same design that we picked in March and we went, we went through the DD and CD phases and the design did not change. So.
Go ahead.
So more specifically, will all the students be able to fit into the cafeteria if the schedule, if the scheduling is changed?
Oh, most, most definitely, yep.
Okay. And can we get a list of those? I know, I'm sure that's available elsewhere, but if you can get us that, I would love to see the specifics on that.
Of the value engineering, yeah, yeah, of course.
Yeah, I guess the other, the other question I would have is just generally speaking, now this is a little bit of a different model. So you are working with conceptual drawings and obviously the more specific the drawings are, then the more specific the information about pricing. Is this project, would you say, the changes between conceptual and the design documents and the pricing changes, is it fairly typical in terms of what you see when those, when that evolution happens? Or have there been kind of a more extreme changes between the two with this one?
Um, I wouldn't say it's typical, but it's, it's not extreme either. There are lots of changes going in from conceptual design to a more detailed design. Yes.
Okay. So, and then the other question I would have about the value engineering. So in terms of the number of classrooms, and I also might look to Mr. Hattas for this or to the Board of Education members who are here, the classroom, the educational specifications with the value edu, the engineering are still going to be met?
Oh, yeah. See, that, that's, that's what we fought so hard with. We tried to fit everything in, into this building and meet the Board of Ed specifications. And we, we won't, we haven't, this number does not veer away from any of the Board of Ed specifications. We made sure everything is included.
Thank you.
Anything else at this point?
Yes, not right now.
So just kind of summarize where we are. We've got 2.8 million for kind of phase, what used to be phase one, or the roof project. We've got 5.4 million, or what used to be phase two. What is the current estimate being carried for windows and PCB mitigation?
Uh, we are currently around 2.4.
It's 2.4. Okay, so 2.8 and 5.4 is 8.2. And 2.4 on top of that is 9.6. We were told earlier that we're at 4.2 million. Can somebody fill me in on how we get from these three numbers to?
4.2 million.
14.2 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't read that. Sorry, just for the record, guys, this is way too small and when it's copied, way too dark to read. So this is not helpful.
Mike has a clearer one than any bigger.
So, but what I'm looking at, the roof, 2.8, cafeteria expansion and classrooms, 5.4. You just said 2.4. We were told earlier in the presentation that we're up to 14.2 million.
Yeah, yep.
Can you, that's 9.6 to 14.2.
10.6 is your number.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's a, that doesn't include any of the soft costs. It doesn't include CM fee. There's a percentage fee for the construction manager, for the architect. You know, we have our environmental consultant, all the soft costs. And we also have a contingency on the, on the, everything as well in case the numbers don't come in like they do or things need to change during construction. We, we keep that contingency in there.
So how much has soft cost gone up? Because that was mentioned as one of the reasons.
Well.
What's that, what was that and what has it gone up to?
Well, the, the original SPA estimate did not include soft costs for a lot of these items. So if you look at the column all the way on the right, it did not include the CM fee.
Yeah, if you could, because folks are at home.
Yep.
Don't see this and frankly, I can't read it. So if you could.
Yeah, sure.
Tell us what the numbers are, that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, in the SPA estimate, they had the numbers for the three phases like we talked about. They did not include any numbers, did not include any numbers for escalation, which is.
So escalation went from zero to what?
Uh, total escalation that we're carrying now is, well, that is 65,000, but that was reduced because we are at this time. Escalation, you put it on, it's a percentage base, you put it on the construction, the amount of construction. So when you actually do start construction and go out to bid a year in advance, that number is included.
Gotcha.
So if we included escalation at this point with SPA, it'd be about 500,000.
Okay. Step me from 65,000 to 500. I just heard you say 65,000.
Because we are, and if you want to look at, if you look at the number we're carrying now, but at this point, when the SPA estimate was taken, if we, if escalation was included in that number, it would have been 500,000 because the number was taken over a year ago.
Okay, let me, I'm, I didn't mean to ask that complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's what I want to know.
It is.
We had a number of 11.6 million.
Yep.
What was the escalation in that number?
Zero.
Okay. And what's the escalation in the latest available information we have right now?
Well, the escalation number, right, right, we are almost at the point of construction, so our, our number is lower, but it would be, it would have been 500,000. It's a, it's a hard thing to, it's a hard thing to explain escalation. We're at a different point in the construction, but let me, we'll go past that and I'll talk about the other costs that aren't included. Do we want to do that?
Okay, I'm still not clear on why we can't answer. There's got to be a number in this column of numbers for escalation.
Um, all right, well, okay, so it's 125,000 for the new construction, 126,000 for the windows and abatement, and 33,000 for the roof.
Okay, so a couple hundred thousand, 250,000?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now, other soft costs, we said they weren't included last time. Which soft costs weren't included?
The, the construction manager's fee.
Okay.
Um, right now, it's a number of 212,000.
Uh huh.
The construction manager's general conditions fee.
I don't see that too.
It's green and green. First time.
Got it. Thank you.
Is a number of 700,000. We have Perkins Eastman, the architect's fee. They did have a fee included in the SPA estimate and those are relatively similar, so I won't include those. They did not include the owner's representative fee, 400,000. It did not include geotechnical. Then there's a lot of smaller fees for soft costs, geotechnical engineer, environmental site assessment, topographic survey, cold consultant, legal services, traffic consultant, and these equal about, about 75,000.
So on our original estimate, we didn't include a fee for, for a construction manager, an owner's rep, or even a traffic consultant?
There was a, a general, a general number of 15,000 put in for miscellaneous.
For all, 15, 15,000?
Yep.
For all those items? All right, we generally have a traffic consultant on almost all these projects.
Yeah.
So it seems that would be something on the checklist of things we'd include.
Let me, if I may.
And not that the traffic consultant is the biggest number, but what I'm looking for is what was missed versus what might be unique to this project versus all other building committees.
Right.
Some of these look like they're costs that we incur on every single building committee we have. So I'm trying to understand why the estimate wasn't a little more inclusive.
Right. The Silver Petroselli estimate was a conceptual estimate, not unlike what we've seen in other, constructed for other building committees on other projects, Strathfield, Fairfield Woods, so on. There was a very specific number for a couple of these items listed. When the, this team sat down, one of the items that was not included was a program manager, because we don't have a program manager on every job. That was a decision that was made pass.
When you say program manager, can we use the same term? Is that different than what we're just talking about?
An owner's rep.
Okay.
All right. A constructor was built into the numbers. That was part of the struggle when they were, when the, this team was first given the Silver Petroselli number. A constructor is built into the numbers listed in his estimate.
What's a constructor?
A constructor, as far as a GC, construction manager, so on, somebody to build the building.
Yep.
Was baked into the numbers, his square footage numbers on the conceptual estimate. This team breaks up the numbers a different way, so there's not a one-to-one relationship with the numbers in the Silver Petroselli estimate versus the Gilbain. They just formulate their numbers differently and present them differently.
In terms of the total though?
In terms of the total.
You take the total divided by the number of square feet versus what the square, and take the total before divided by what the square footage number is there. What's the difference in square, square foot?
So initially, the soft costs in the Silver Petroselli number was 600 and some odd thousand dollars, 600.
Five.
605,000 dollars.
Is that based on a percentage or how does that number get arrived at? Given you don't have all the details, which makes sense, how's that number?
Architects' fees are typically based on the percentage of the construction value. So when you look at the, the next number over from the Silver Petroselli column, the second column from the left, the architect's fee was very similar to Silver Petroselli's line I know fee because it's based on a percentage of construction. When you go above the line to the bottom line on the construction, they were almost the same. So you would expect the number to be the same. As the construction number grows, the architect's fees going to grow, so is the construction manager's fee. So what was initially in March, the Perkins Eastman, the architect's fee, was 456,000 compared to 463 carried in the Silver Petroselli conceptual estimate, has now grown by 180,000, 627,000 because it's a percentage of a larger construction number.
All right, and that, that's almost a 50% increase in terms of the numbers you just related, correct?
It, it should be proportional to the increase in the construction line, yeah.
So what I'm trying to get to, did the, so the construction cost went up about 50%, so the architect's fees went up about 50%?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not the case though. All right, the construction cost, if I'm reading it correctly, is going from 9.3 million to 10.6 million. Is that, am I looking at the right construction cost number that the architect's fee as a percentage of construction cost would be based on?
You're doing it, I'm looking at the footnotes based on construction cost. You would be taking the 456,000 in the March estimate.
Uh huh.
Would be a percentage of the subtotal of construction, 8.159 million. The number of 627, 627,000 in the October estimate would be a percentage of the 10.635 million.
Very well.
The design fee is 5.59% of the construction value. So it's a, it's a linear relationship, or it should be. I didn't, I didn't crunch these numbers, so I don't know if there's a mathematical error, but it should be a linear, linear value. The Silver, because the, the big struggle in this presentation and what, what's important is starting, the two estimates that are at similar levels of, of design are the Silver Petroselli estimate, the far right-hand column, and the second right-hand column, the 32614 estimate. At that point, the bottom line numbers were within 200,000 of each other. How they divided them up between the different categories is different. They knew right off the bat that, you know, the, the program changed, we have a owner's rep. So that was a cost that they didn't expect. There were some other fees that were, the team looked at differently, such as there was a lot of discussion about how much money to hold for environmental testing. While they're holding a higher number than the Silver Petroselli number, it's not necessarily that either number is wrong. We're not at the end of that process to know what the final number is. So this, this team is holding different numbers with their basis, their knowledge, and what they, they see as appropriate.[1788.12] At the time of Silver Petricelli's estimate, they held what they thought was appropriate for that number. So it's just, it's, it's hard to compare the estimates from one design group to another design group when they don't have a sit-down meeting to say, well, that's where I really meant the, that's, that's the line I really meant to put that in, divvy up the numbers the same. What's important is the bottom line numbers matched.
Well, I mean, I don't want to get into weeds here, but I don't think I agree with that.
Okay.
Because if I'm reading this correctly, we're, we're looking at the SPA estimate as the original estimate that we did a lot of estimating from, and it's wrong. There's a lot, there's a lot of things that weren't there that have changed one way or the other. And now we're comparing it to the March column, which is roughly the same total number that you're talking about, eleven six versus eleven eight. So it's a couple hundred thousand, not a material difference. But there's a lot of significant changes. There are, there are a lot of things in the construction cost section and in the soft cost section that weren't in the SPA estimate whatsoever, right? And there are also some offsets up top in construction. And, and if you look up top, there's a reduction in construction cost from nine point three to roughly eight point two. About one point one five million dollars of construction cost. And then, so what I'm hearing is that when we went from SPA to March, and I'm assuming that when we got to March, we knew more than we knew with the SPA stuff. Right? That we had to start making some, no?
No, because the, the, what the, the committee hired an architect, they hired Perkins Eastman Associates. Perkins Eastman went through very, multiple conceptual studies. They, and they were, in final announce, there were more than six, but the building committee had six schemes in front of them to choose from.
Right.
Two of them were the two schemes that were in the Silver Petricelli number, and that, in the Silver Petricelli report came up with two different conceptual designs for accomplishing the project and meeting the edsp. Those were evaluated along with four others, and numbers were placed on them by the present team. Long and short of it is that the scheme that was picked came out to eleven point eight million dollars. It was at a conceptual level of design, the same as the two conceptual level, uh, plans that were put forward by Silver Petricelli. They were not developed any further. They were still at the conceptual level of design. As Mike, Mike is speaking to, the conceptual budget is, there's a lot of square footage values put on different types of constructions. HVAC, concrete, finishes, things like that, to get the conceptual estimate together. So at that point, the eleven six in the Silver Petricelli column and the eight, eleven point eight in the, the, I'll put it as the PEA column.
Right.
Were at the exact same level of design and is basically the same level of knowledge. They were presented differently, as you can see by the tabulation, but they essentially come out to the same.
Kristin, go ahead.
So it, it was helpful for you to explain it in that way, at least for me, in terms of looking at this. For me, the bottom line is, we funded based on conceptual design. And we did not have the kind of information that we have available today with the evolved documents. Now that we have the documents evolved, we understand that some of the construction costs are going to increase. One missing piece was the escalator. That seems to be the one thing that really truly was missing. The escalator was not there, which is kind of, now as we're approaching construction, it up and back down because we're closer to a potential construction date. But that, the change in, for example, the architect's fees, and I did crunch the numbers, and they are, it is the same percentage, have gone up because we know that the construction costs for the actual design is higher. Did I get that right in terms of? So the reality is, in order to construct this project as we had originally requested in the conceptual study, we're going to need to spend the additional funds and already having value engineered.
Right.
Right?
Right. And, and some of the numbers, we'll have, we'll have a better understanding of the numbers as the bids come in. The roof number itself, from a historical basis on roofs that we've had bid around town, we, we have some knowledge based on that. It's on the upper end of the scale of what would be expected. So I would be, I would be hopeful that that number's much lower. I'm not the one that puts the numbers in here, that's, that's the job of the team. That, that's why they were hired. The windows has stayed fairly consistent. There's been numerous studies on the windows, so.
Just knocked on wood.
Yeah.
Right. The discovery, the, the amount of discovery and investigation of the PCB issue is fairly far in its development.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's a lot different than where we were when the TFC was investigating, where they went and tested maybe half a dozen windows and got some readings, and it was, you couldn't extrapolate it to the nine hundred other windows that are in the building. We, we have that knowledge now, so it's much better to find them now.
Follow up on that. Again, recently, we had another experience with the EPA, and until we get that final approval, we don't know that for certain either, right? I mean, you, it sounds like we have better data in terms of what we know here, but until we know and have the document in hand from the EPA, that's also-
What, can you, what you're, what you're alluding to is the Riverfield project?
Yes.
And that was essentially a change of policy by EPA, which, you're right. Could we, could another one come up like that? Absolutely. Do we expect it? No. That, that one was definitely from out in left field, was not expected. Even, even by that consultant that does a lot of work with the EPA specifically for this, was very surprised by that stance. We probably were patient number one or two that got hit with that change of policy. But now that it was, it was handled to, the EPA was saying that it wasn't handled consistently in the same format. So that's why they became so rigid, and we just had bad timing, I guess. But we, we don't have a similar situation like that. That specific one here, it's, it's, it's caulk and cross-contamination into substrates, not something hidden. We've done those types of investigations. That is actually the plan that's within days of final approval. They're tweaking some words in the approval document, so.
So I just have another question in terms of bidding and construction and timing and the need for funds. In other words, this project, you mentioned in the earlier comments, that, that one phase of the bidding, your hope is to start construction in December. Currently, you, there aren't enough funds allocated or to complete this project. So how, what, how does the timing work? And that may be a question, you know, also for the first selectmen, but.
No, it, actually, you hit on one of the questions that I had also, so, and if I might expand on that a little bit?
Please.
Let's take a look at, at kind of what's happened. We met in July. And we identified there that we were significantly over on phase two, the cafeteria and classroom construction. We weren't sure about phase three, the windows and PCBs, and we hadn't gotten the bids back, the roof construction at that point. But we did identify if we're over, we had a series of steps to go through in terms of what we needed to do, and before that got brought back to the boards to identify where we were as a status update. In September, we had our capital planning workshop, and the number in the capital plan didn't change at all. And then the week after that, I met with Sal and Twig, and we identified that this project, the numbers I saw at that point showed that the entire project could be as much as fifty percent over, up in the sixteen or seventeen million range. Since then, there's been significant work done in terms of addressing some of that to get it down to, is the overall cost now fourteen point two? Is that our best estimate at this point?
Correct.
To get it down to fourteen point two. So given that, given we've been working on this since July, and we've been able to get it down to fourteen point two, I am concerned that we would start construction, we'd want approval for the full project. So my question is, what's the process and this, and we're looking at this at two different levels, just to be fair to the building committee, so everybody's clear. This is a different approach we've used for estimating projects. I think this is the first one, Sal, we've done this way? Certainly one of the first two, but perhaps the first one?
Technically, two, second because Osborne Hill for different reasons.
Okay.
Kind, kind of follow-
A little bit different there, because we already, I will classify Osborne Hill as significantly different. We already had a very firm hand on some of the costs before we went for the approval.
Okay, fair enough.
So in this case, let's call this the first one we're doing on it. So I'm trying to learn at two levels. One is the project, in terms of what's happening, what's going on. So we can do our job in terms of, of making the right decisions for the town and helping with all the boards and communication. But the second one is about the process in terms of where we are. Now technically, we have this information, we haven't put a shovel on the ground yet. So I could argue that, that in many cases, this is an improvement over being halfway through the project and identifying and growing.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
However, everything we've learned over the past July, and I'm assuming we went through some of this before we sat down in July. But let's just say July, August, September, now October, that's four months we have lived with. This is going to be significantly over budget. So the question becomes, what is, is there a plan at this point at all in terms of when do we notify the boards, when do we ask for additional appropriation? Do, because what I'm worried about is this is effectively three different projects.
Correct.
And it, concerned that we're going to take the project we're most over on and start construction in December without an approval for that overage. So any thought or process at this point? I know we haven't talked about that yet, other than generically we need to. But I think we're at the point where we actually need to take some firm action.
And, and I agree, and I think one of the issues with the project is, we, we essentially bought into a timeline. And in order to get students in seats next September, shovel has to hit the ground. And it's one of the reasons, you know, obviously with the team's consultation, we face the project. And then another, the, the plan is, once we have firm numbers, bids in place, that's when we have to have, you know, inform all the boards in terms of what are our next steps. In terms of, you know, the feedback from the Board of Education, feedback from, you know, you as well and the other boards.
But this is in essence, three different projects. All right, and let me play it out. If we go to the next Board of Finance meeting, that's November thirtieth. If you give an update to the RTM in late November, that's that. You're talking about starting the project in December with a, you know, almost a fifty percent overage on that, for that phase of the project. I'm not sure that's dealing with the boards in the best way.
Let me just, can I just talk about the schedule?
If you can stand to the mic here, welcome to add whatever comments you need.
I'll just go through the schedule real quick. The roof is going out to, has, is already out to bid right now, so-
For the second time?
For the second time, yep. So the roof bids are due on November fifth, so we will know what those numbers are at that point. For the cafeteria and the classrooms, the roof bid, or the, the phase two bids are due on November twentieth. That hasn't gone out to bid, so if that number needs to change by a week or two, I think we could work with that. So construction is starting, slated to start in December, but will, the bids will, we'll get the bids with the numbers on what the construction cost actually will be on November thirtieth, or November twentieth.
Yeah. And my comment is, just in terms of trust, openness and communication between the boards, starting construction without having notified the boards that we don't have enough money to finish construction, even for that first phase, it's kind of a glitch.
Okay.
All right, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not looking for an answer right now. My question is, had you thought about that? If you hadn't, that's, I think it's something we need to address. I think we need to get a written update out to the boards ASAP in terms of what this is. And I think that it's only appropriate since it's, it's not like we are going from three point six to three point nine, and maybe we can make that up as we go through. We're going from three point six to five point four for that one phase. And I think that, that we need to do a better job of communication, explaining to boards where we are and asking for their support at this point.
Okay. Can do that.
All right, so that the key meetings would be November fifth at this board, November thirteenth at the Board of Finance, and just not clear on the last Thursday in November there. I think it's the Thursday before Thanksgiving for the, for the RTM. But I think this is a new situation to some degree, so I think that we might want to talk a little bit offline about how to best format that communication for the three boards. And again, I don't mean to put the building committee on the spot, this is a different process than we've used before. We in essence know more than we might have in the past in terms of what we were projecting for versus where we are. But I think we need to keep everybody updated. So we as a town and the approval boards can learn from that, but I'll open up my colleagues in case, I kind of jumped in on your question, Kristin. Were there things you need to add to that, or?
No, I'll defer and I'll come back if you-
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Tetra makes, makes a couple of really good points there. You know, if, if this project is roughly all three phases, if they're roughly two point eight or three million dollars over, and that's the best information that we have available today with some bids in, with some bids, or with some bids out, with others coming, and then the third phase, the windows, you know, we just, we don't have any of those bids in yet, do we, for the windows?
No.
Right. So, so there's a, there's quite a bit of unknown, right? But with what we know, with everything we know today, if we think in the grand scheme of things, we're going to be roughly three million dollars over, it, it, it just would not be administratively good government for us to go out and spend within the project total dollars, you know, not two-thirds of it to make the math simple, but eighty or ninety percent of it, and then know that we're not going to have enough left over to do the third phase without coming back to the town boards and, and letting us know that now. I mean, it'll still be a little rough number-wise, but we know that the fourteen point four is much closer to reality for all three phases than the original eleven point six or even the eleven point eight was. So that's probably the number that we should discuss and, you know, approve, so that you guys are much closer, big picture, looking forward. So I completely, I completely agree with that. And the sooner the, sooner the, we can do that, the better, because if you're going to start hitting the ground in December, then we've already committed to that phase, and if that's the phase that's throwing it most out of whack, which it is, then we need to address the overall financial picture of the project sooner than later. Because in the end, Mr. Hatzis needs classrooms and cafeteria and other enhancements and improvements to his high school, and we certainly support that. We want that to happen. That's the most important thing, and we need safe windows, and we need a roof that doesn't leak, and all these other things that are very important to the project. So none of my comments are in opposition to the project, they're just understanding the process, where we are, how the numbers changed, and how we can inform the boards, back to Mr. Tetra's point, about making sure that we know, we know we're going to be over. On the low end is two and a half, on the high end is three and a half, something like that would get us at least to a comfort zone of knowing what we're looking at. Now, along those lines, if you could, can you take this document here and send it to us in Excel so we can work with it?
Sure.
That would, that would be very helpful to, to be able to analyze some of the changes and some of the variances. And it would also be helpful if there, it's kind of hard to read some of the notes at the bottom here. Maybe if there were some other notes off to the right on each row that would better define some things that weren't there, that are there.
Yeah, if I might, for those of us that kind of visually challenge at times. If, if you could not save paper and put this on more than one sheet of paper, that would be very helpful. Because one of the challenges there is you're obviously using three-quarters of a page to present all this stuff, and that's a lot of detail for just one page. So I'd be less efficient with space.
Sure.
And more focused on making sure that the information is clearly understood, so it can be followed appropriately in doing that. I think that the other sense of urgency in all this, if we were doing the roofs next, as, as we were the original phase one, and forgive me for not being up to date on the phases as we've renumbered, then fine, we'd be doing the roofs, and we kind of have to do the roof because that protects the entire asset, the building, everything else. We're pushing forward with this one, where as Mr. Koway pointed out, we're the most over, that's the driver- over, that's the driver for the overage. And leaving the roofs and the PCB mitigation till after that, um, that puts the entire kind of project in, in a difficult light, and it puts the boards in a difficult light. We just went through, today's the 15th of August, on the 15th of September, 30 days ago, we presented to the RTM, Board of Selectmen, uh, technically the Board of Ed, and the Board of Finance, that this project was on budget, and we'd had no information that said it would be over that. Not, you weren't there, I don't mean to, but just from a communication glitch, that's kind of a challenge. So that for most of the boards, they don't know the information that we have here. Uh, the reason I sat down with Twig and Sal right after that is because that was not what I'd heard back in July, and I wanted to see what had changed and what had, uh, transpired. It turned out it was, uh, worse than what you're presenting today. So that's why we kind of wanted an update before the Board of Selectmen to update our board as to what was taking place. Uh, and obviously, there's lots that have taken place, a lot of work has been done to kind of reap value engineer or get the cost down. So I don't mean to minimize any of that, and I don't mean to suggest this board isn't grateful for that. But I don't want us to get caught in the communication trap of knowing something and not having told folks, so that they can get their head around it, they can get their questions answered, they can get, um, behind us to, as Mr. Kyler said, to support it. It also has a significant impact on other projects that we're looking at. So $3 million here impacts the overall capital planning, uh, schedule, and what the impact is on all the other projects that we're contemplating. So I think the, we want to make sure that folks are looking at that, um, with a full understanding of what our capital needs are. All right, yeah?
I'm good.
Thank you. I want to say thank you. You all are really a test case in many ways for us in terms of shifting how we've done things, and clearly, we didn't have the same kind of information that we usually do when we are moving forward with funding of projects. So I appreciate the work that you've done to try and make this work and to value engineer, to do whatever you can, to compromise, and I know that that's hard work, and I also give credit to the Board of Education, the Central Office staff, and our Headmaster, Mr. Hattis, because I know that that's a collaborative effort. I am very concerned about the timing of this project, because we know that the students are there, so obviously, we'll reiterate, the roof, not just that doesn't leak, but doesn't blow off, and, um, the windows, which we've been talking about for many years and have to get done. The project as a whole was something that I supported in its entirety, in part because of the changes to space and the need for that space, our science classrooms I'll reference in particular. So I look forward to having another conversation on the 5th of November, which I think we'll be needing to have caffeinated beverages at that meeting, because it's, I think we have some other big items on the agenda that night as well. But I'm, I'm glad for the information, and I think, as I said before, I understand that what's happened here is the numbers, as we've gotten more information, have become clearer, and that in order to do this project, as we had originally intended it, we are going to need to, um, support further funding for this project. So I, we'll see you in November, I hope.
See, any further questions in the board?
Just a last point on Kristin's comment. I mean, this is our first time through this new process, and it certainly is a learning curve for all of us, but, you know, maybe we can pull something away from this. Maybe we can take this first column, which was, you know, certainly short on, um, you know, some, some items, some substance even, and learn from where we are today, so that when, when we're doing this type of estimating in the future, whether it's on a percentage basis, or whatever other basis it might make sense for it to be used, uh, maybe we can find a, a more accurate way to, you know, think about things that, you know, weren't included in this first SPA type, type of budgeting that we would have included in the plan earlier on. Kind of a template, if you will.
Correct. There are things to learn. Sal?
Yes, I agree with you that there's things to learn from this process, especially being the first time out.
Yep, and just building on, I think that, that literally two levels. One is the specific project, right? Ludlow High School, what we're doing, what we need to do to get through this, uh, what other options do we have? All right, so that's one level. Then the second level's the process overall. Is this a process that we can learn enough from to say we want to continue it? Or is this a process we learn enough from that we say, you know, there are significant weaknesses in this, and we don't necessarily want to go through with this? But I think we want to look at that independent of the Ludlow project.
Correct. I agree with that.
Good news, bad news. I mean, the bad news is we're over, the good news is, we're learning about it now, not, and let me pick on, um, Tomlinson Middle School, when we did the renovation there, we learned about being over, significantly over, um, well after school as we opened, and, and the project was almost complete. So I think that this is, from that sta, standpoint alone, better information much earlier in the process than in the past.
This is quite an accelerated process.
So the question becomes, can we learn enough from this to say this is still a good approach, or do we have to tweak this? So let's not lose sight of the process in the midst of looking at the project.
And just may I add, you know, Sal, you just said this is quite an accelerated process, and that's what we needed for this project. That's what we were looking for, it's one of the reasons why.
There was no way.
So, you know, that's, I, I appreciate that comment about the cycle of learning, but I, I.
Right, there, there was no way to accomplish what, or have a hope of having the seats available, uh, come September 1st, everybody says that, but school actually starts in the end of August, and we have to clean before that, so we actually wanted for the 15th of August, but.
I do.
But, um, we would be a year from being at this point in the design and bidding, following the previous process, just on average for the last three jobs.
Yeah. And the challenge in all of that is that, um, each project doesn't totally stand on its own, because it impacts the capital planning and, and what we're doing elsewhere. So I think.
Correct.
It was certainly a communication glitch in terms of, uh, going through the workshop without this update and information, and we'll have to take a look at kind of what we can do there to improve that process. But I think that, that this is part of our overall capital plan that we use for, for budgeting our capital expenditures and consequently down our debt service, looking at the budgets ahead. Any more questions from the board?
No, thanks.
All right. Thank you for coming forth, thank you for going through this. And let's make sure we, Sal, I could ask you to coordinate just our talking, um, in the next week or so, to make sure we talk through the communication plan, and, and if you can sit down with, uh, key players on the, the building committee team and step through what we can do, and, and let's talk through what happens at the upcoming meeting, so everybody can get up to speed.
Could be actual topic for tomorrow's meeting that we have set already.
Very good. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next meeting, or next item on the agenda, the tax collector to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. Now, a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any amendments?
Yes, um, I move to amend item eight and add the language in the amount rec, the amount recommended of $14,419.91.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the amendment, the amendment only? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the item as amended stands before us. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on the item that's before us?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, tax collector item down. To hear, consider and act upon any communications, I don't have any at the moment. To hear, consider and act upon any other business that should probably come before the board, there's none that I know of. Uh, moving on then, next is adjourn, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.